I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so the record reflects those members and administrative officers who are present. I will now call the roll. Village Attorney Sarah Phan.
Present.
Village Manager Benton.
Here.
Councilwoman Birch.
Present.
Councilman Melz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Brady.
Here.
You have quorum.
All right. Well, I think our first item on the agenda tonight is one of those very pleasant ones. I'm glad to have the opportunity to do this today. This is a presentation for the September House of the Month Certificate of Recognition, presented to Dr. Whitney and Mr. Austin Mayberry, 29 Northwest 99th Street. Hi. So, just a quick introduction. So, in choosing where to live, the Mayberry family certainly knew that they wanted a family-oriented community with a warm neighborhood feel. During their search, they came across Miami Shores Village. They knew it was exactly what they were looking for and made the move just five months ago. What they didn't know is that the house was featured in a very prominent home improvement TV show. The property was chosen to be on the show based on its design and simplicity. These are the same reasons it is being elected as the House of the Month. The property is maintained regularly with great detail to the planters, which translate into a clean-cut, simple-to-maintain property. So, we have a certificate here. We'd like to present, if you could please come up, I'd like to present you with this. So, thank you very much for having this beautiful home. Here's the certificate. And should we have a come over here so you can get the picture?
Yes.
All right. So, you can do that? All right.
All right. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you very much.
Next item is 4B, Historic Preservation Board Annual Report, presented by Chairperson Horman.
Hi. Good evening. First, let me apologize for not making it the last time. I work in the glamorous world of magazine publishing, which is not always very tolerant of my outside activities. I wanted to discuss with you a few points here on our report. We have been active since October of last year with the new board. I've been on the board for many, many years, apparently. I've lost count already. It's been so many. And we had several meetings. We wanted to try to at least institute a regular monthly meeting. That wasn't the case. Hopefully, we can do it this round. We talked about many properties over the course of the year. We had a few renovations, additions, things of that sort. We discussed other initiatives that we'd like to undertake. And at the very end of our year, we had an interesting situation, which I had never dealt with before in my years on the board, is we had a project for which we issued a certificate of appropriateness for an addition, and it ended up sort of getting all redesigned at the planning and zoning level, which has never happened in all the time that I've ever been on the board. And apparently, it's been redesigned to the point of being identical to the historic structure, which is not in conformance with the standards of the Secretary of the Interior, which we're supposed to follow. So, we subsequently have sort of a demoralized, disheartened board of people, two of whom are coming up for renewal, who I don't think are going to renew because they're sort of disheartened at all that's going on, and basically, we feel like we have not much of an effect. I spoke with somebody at the state level, and I spoke with him about some of the situations going on, and he expressly said to me, "It seems to be that your board was designed to be very low-impact." And we don't want to be low-impact. We want to have some impact, at least. We're a community of beautiful properties and homes, offices, and the like, and we'd like to keep it that way. Not saying that we don't want to progress, but we would like to maintain the character and the quality of life that we've had, that people move here for, people who've grown up come back here for, all of that. So, I'm hoping that you can help us in some ways. Some of the recommendations I asked, one of which I found kind of strange, looking at our revised ordinance, was that we had our ability to get funds from the council removed. It was erased from our new ordinance, which I thought was kind of odd. Not that we have ever asked for a lot of money, if at all, but, you know, we'd like to conduct some tours and maybe do some educational initiatives, and it would be nice if we could have that restored. We've also noticed that our agendas and our meeting minutes don't seem to be online. Other boards seem to have theirs online. We don't know why. We would like to have those put online as well. And we want to continue to do our work, or at least try to do our work. We've been hemmed in a lot with discussions over things that we shouldn't even be discussing, like the list of properties that we already have as designated seems to be in question now and suddenly invalid for some reason. And it's disheartening for us. So, we'd like your help, if at all possible. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Counsel?
I just wanted to clarify, because it's listed in here three times, so it must be 577 Northeast 96th Street that was the property in question?
Correct. Correct. Yes. Yes. We had that come back to us twice. We asked for some modifications in the design, which we were happy with at the end, and it ended up in planning and zoning, and somehow got turned around, in a way. So, that was the one, yes.
Okay. And one more question.
Sure.
Do you consider this unique to this municipality, or have you seen this happen in other cities?
In terms of being, having something reversed in that way, you're saying?
Yes.
I haven't seen it in other municipalities. I'm sure it's possible. I know that there's a lot of other boards that are advisory. I don't know that all of them have to go through planning and zoning. I think maybe one in South Florida might have to. I don't know of any others. It just seemed really odd. It just seemed very strange, and to the point of going against these standards, which we're supposed to uphold. It just seemed odd. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Oh, I just wanted to mention, I saw here you're exploring, running a column in the newsletter and/or the eGrit.
Yes.
I would definitely highly encourage you to do that. I think that the more that people understand the purpose of the board and, you know, the work you're doing, what it does to the community, I think that would be, that would be great. So, I definitely encourage you to do that. And I did want to mention, as to the, as to the minutes, I know that the clerk is working through a process of getting all the minutes for all the boards up to date. There's been some substantial work in that area, so I'm sure we'll have an update for you on that soon as well.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So, does anybody have any other?
I just have one comment. We go through the budget process every year. There's nothing in the code that prohibits your board from coming to the council and asking for some, you know, funds. I agree, there's nothing in there that expressly addresses it one way or another, but I don't think you're prohibited from coming to the council and asking for funds during the budget process. So, you know, I would encourage you to think about that.
The reason I mentioned it was it was expressly stated in our ordinance previously.
Yeah. What happened in late 2017 is, in response to the county's ordinance, we had to do specific revision, and I'm sure that not everything that was in our prior ordinance made it into the new ordinance. But I don't think that was an intention to say that you can't, like any other group in the village, you know, official or unofficial, come before the council as part of the budget process and ask for consideration of some funding, especially if you've got a good proposal.
Thank you.
So, and one other thing that came to mind is that the library is sponsoring a homes tour, a bus tour.
Oh, yes.
Coming up. And they're charging for it, and they're including a lunch, and I'm pretty sure that they're covering their expenses that way. And that had been the approach, as I understand, in the past when historic home tours were done in the village through the auspices of the Historic Preservation Board. So, the ability to hold something and then, and generate the funds by charging for it and then, and not necessarily needing a budget.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. But sometimes when the, when they do the historic home tours, which I've attended many of them, and I'm actually registered to go on that bus tour, they like to print things in advance, brochures or maps or something, and it would be nice to be able, at least, to be.
To have a little something.
Exactly. To procure some funds in order to do something like that, because we seem to have an education problem here in Miami Shores with historic preservation. People don't see the true benefit of it, and we hope to change some minds.
Counsel, any further comments? All right. Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, we are at the, yeah, the point in the meeting, we're for public comment, so if anybody has anything they would like to speak on, we are going to have a comment, I think, also with our ordinance on first reading for the comprehensive plan. But if anybody has anything they'd like to speak about now, please come up and state your name and address, and you have a three-minute time limit. Okay. All right. Seeing as there's no public comment, we will close the public comment period. So, we can, clerk, please move on to the consent agenda.
Items are routine self-explanatory, excuse me, self-explanatory matters and are not expected to require discussion or review. Items will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by any member of the council, that item must be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. If the public wishes to speak on a matter on the consent agenda, they must inform the village clerk prior to the start of the meeting. They will be recognized to speak prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Item 6A, approval of the September 17, 2018 final budget hearing minutes. Item 6B, approval of the September 17, 2018 village council meeting minutes. Item 6C, a resolution of the village council of Miami Shores Village, Florida, approving and authorizing the village manager to submit a grant application for the 2018 National Urban and Community Forestry Grant with the State of Florida, Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, Division of Forestry agreeing to execute an agreement for the grant if the grant is awarded to the village and to provide matching funds, providing for an effective date. Mr. Vice Mayor, I have not received any requests from the public to pull any of the items.
Can we have a motion?
I'll go ahead and move the consent agenda. I'm thrilled about the forestry grant possibility.
All right. So, we'll call the question. All those in favor? Aye?
Item 7A, ordinance of the Miami Shores Village Council amending the village's comprehensive plan's goals, objectives, and policies consistent with the village's evaluation and appraisal report of the village's comprehensive plan in accordance with the Section 163.3191 Florida statute, together with other amendments thereto, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Staff on this item is the Planning and Zoning Director.
I think that we wanted to go ahead and invite, if anybody in the public had any comments on this ordinance on first reading, invite you to come up now. All right. Seeing we have no public comment, we'll close the public comment period. Mr. Director?
Hi. Good evening. Travis Kendall, Planning and Zoning. This is obviously the first reading of the comprehensive plan. We've had it tabled just a couple of times. This is clearly not the version which we started, which originally. There have been significant revisions to it based upon recommendations and conversations. You know, at this point, it's sort of in a, ready-to-be-transmitted form, to have the official reviews done by the state, as well as the surrounding municipalities, as well as all of the other organizations which are listed, obviously, in the process specifically. There aren't too many to name right now. But those are available on the webpage, as is the final red-line version, as is the updated executive summary. I would suggest that anybody who wishes to go in and avail themselves of that information, otherwise, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. So, Mr. Director, just want to say thank you for providing the executive summary and the very clear red-line version online. I've been able to have some opportunity to review this. Counsel, does anybody have any comments or questions for the Planning and Zoning Director?
I just want to thank you, Mr. Kendall, because I know that several people have met with you individually, people from Planning and Zoning. I know I myself met with you after going through the entire document, and I appreciate the executive summary that makes the changes a little bit more up-to-date. I also appreciated your piece, your one-page piece on the process, which informs everyone and everyone out there in the village that might be concerned about the comprehensive plan, and the original people who came in June and expressed their concerns that 14 different agencies will now review the plan after we do, and then it will come back to us after that review, that a lot of the substance of the plan is more or less boilerplate. As somebody that, who's very interested in education myself, I know that that particular portion, a lot of it, is mandated, and it's mandated by the statute that requires us to do a comprehensive plan. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Mr. DeCuesto, who took it upon himself to do the original part of the work on the comprehensive plan, and he saved the village considerable funds by using his expertise to begin to bring the plan up to the new statutory changes that are the requirements. And then, I also wanted to reiterate one of the last sentences in your summary of the process, which says, and hopefully, this would be comforting to most residents, it says that no zoning changes are approved by the passage of the comprehensive plan. So, after having gone through it, I'm very, and having been instructed by you as far as what's possible and what's not, and I'm being appreciative of the things that have been inserted that bring it more up-to-date. For example, we have in there that we have an education compact with the district. We have in there that we are implementing an age-friendly initiative for Miami Shores. These are some of the things that we've added that make the plan more robust, in my opinion, as we are in 2018 and going forward. So, I want to thank you for that, all that.
Counsel, any further comments or questions for the director? Okay. Can I please have a motion to pass the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Let's call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Item 8A, sewer system project update by the village manager.
Mr. Manager?
At this time, we have no updates to add.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Item 9, announcements. There are vacancies on seven village boards. If you're interested in applying, applications for board vacancies can be found on the village website and the village clerk's office, and will be accepted through Friday, October 5, 2018, by close of business. Brockway Memorial Library will be holding an artisan fair on Saturday, October 6, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The fair will feature handmade crafts and baked goods, as well as live music. Please call the library at 305-758-8107 for additional information. Village offices will be closed on Monday, October 8, 2018, in observance of Columbus Day. Normal garbage routes will be followed. The next meeting of the village council will be held at 6:30 p.m. on Tuesday, October 16, 2018, and please remember to visit the village website for more information on village events, departments, and to sign up to receive agenda notifications. Item 10, village council comments.
Counsel?
First of all, I would yield some of my time to anyone who came in late that would like to give public comments, since we've had none. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay with you, Tom?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. I have a couple of comments on the comprehensive plan, if I might make them. And I brought a couple of handouts, because it's always fun to have something to give people. They listen to you better. What I'm handing you are copies of the plan that was up a couple of weeks ago before the last meeting, and it seemed to have a little more detail in redlining than the one that's currently up on the website. And I really only had a couple of comments, and there's probably good answers, but I would like to at least plant some seeds in your mind about what I think about.
Excuse me. If you could provide your name for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Robert Abramitis. Do you want my address, where I live in the shores? I'm a resident.
If you'd like.
Well, I'd prefer not to, but I'd give it.
Okay. That's fine.
That's okay.
Okay. Never know who's coming to visit. Anyway, I just want to talk about Chapter 10, Policy 1, 2, on page 75 of the old, which is what I gave you. I call old what I had. It's on page 54, newer, rather, it's missing. There was, in that policy, if you look at it, a limitation on the amount of bonds that could be issued at one time. It was limited to 1% of the assessed value in a single bond issue, and I noticed that's been removed. And, you know, I think, since we're taxpayers here, we probably are entitled to know the thought process that requires it to be removed, what the new cap will be under state law, if any, and why it's being removed. I mean, the old comp plan, if you look at the index on the front, I think it's there, second page, excuse me, you'll see there used to be Capital Project Budget and Capital Improvement Plan. That's been deleted in your new plan, so there's no indication as to why or what you would spend the money on. And I think it'd be fair to say that a provision like that protects taxpayers sometimes from, what sometimes Greenspan used to call the rational exuberance at the moment, and it kind of slows things down when people want to spend other people's money. And I'm not saying there's anything nefarious going on or anything like that, but I wonder why, and have you thought about why you're taking it out and what will replace it? I don't know if you can respond, but I'll continue if you're not. I assume you won't. It's not the point. On page 80 of the old, under Capital Improvements, it's page 58 of your new plan, there used to be a requirement, and I gave you that page, I believe, that the village would maintain a system of public park and recreation lands, which provide at a minimum at least 1.25 additional acres of park and recreation site area per 1,000 permanent population. That's been removed. Again, the question is, why was it removed? It would potentially lead to a development of the golf course, potentially, or there's some plan afoot to substantially increase the population of the village. Whether that was intentional or an oversight, I think it should be thought about and discussed by council, maybe even explained to us taxpayers, much like the bond limitation. Probably, maybe there's good reasons, maybe there's not. Could be oversights. And the final thing, I guess, isn't so much to bring it to your attention as to express my, I guess, displeasure with the Chapter 3 Housing Element, 28, Policy 1, 5, and that's mentioned in your executive summary, unlike the other two matters. And basically, in short summary, it's allowing people to take properties, split them, and build more than one house where one used to exist. That probably won't lead to a huge change in the population of the village, but it will have potentially a substantial impact on what people who bought their homes around those properties were expecting. And again, I just think this is something that should be considered and hopefully discussed by the village council. And that's all I have to say, and I do thank you for allowing me to speak, even though the train kept me on the other side of the village. I think that's going to happen more in the future. So, with that, I say thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
That perhaps Mr. Abramitis can take up his questions with Mr. Kendall after the meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Kendall, Planning and Zoning Director.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. So, I think that was a good, you know, good use, but absolutely, if you have any comments, I know we would like to, you know, absolutely hear them.
Not surprisingly, I do. So, thank you. One of the main things I'd like, I'd like to mention and reiterate in the clerk's comments is that, you know, I think maybe we recently, in the recent years that I've been on council, we have passed some term limits to village boards and committees, and those are beginning to kick in now. So, some people who have been on boards and committees won't be able to apply. There are 17 vacancies. The clerk says that she has received many applications, so that's good. There's one board that doesn't have quite enough. I would urge and encourage you to apply. The deadline is only three days from now. It's not a complicated process. It can all be done online. When you go online, you click on the village clerk, and she has the application right there. It's easily done, and we need more residents to apply than we have positions, so that we will have an abundance of people who wish to serve and get the experience from serving. And it's a, it's really, for most people that serve, a very positive experience. So, I want to thank you for that. And then, the other event that I'd like to mention that is not in the newsletter is that on October 10, which is a week from tomorrow, is Walk Bike to School Day. We have one in the fall, one in the spring. We need it now more than ever, because when you have a group of students walking to school with police escort in the morning, it is a very important message to some people that might not be looking, and those are distracted drivers. And we seem to have more and more of them, and there have been some difficulties on 103rd Street. So, I would urge you, parents out there who might be listening, that if you're considering walking with your child, or biking, or taking your bike, or helping your child take their bike to school, on that day, it's a really great awareness builder. It's also a great, healthy habit to get into for families, and is, there are something like 309 schools in Florida that are signed up for this event, and 4,500 throughout the country. And all of those kids and parents will be helping their children take the healthy way by taking two feet, or two wheels to school on October 10. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? I am inviting people to reach out. I'm juggling a few things right now. We're looking to put them back onto the agenda in the next meeting and the meeting after. One, being the reduction of plastic consumption. If you've been monitoring our meetings, it was two meetings ago, council was taking some steps to move forward in the shores to do the right thing in terms of reducing our plastic footprint, and so invite all residents to reach out to myself or the other council members, as we're working with staff to come up with the policy or ordinance, or whatever it may be, a resolution to better, to best suit our needs here in the community. So, that's one. Two, we're also working to strengthen and give some teeth to our anti- or our littering ordinance, and working with the village manager on that. That will be coming up, too. So, please reach out. You have any suggestions or any questions or comments about what we're working to do on that? And the third item is that we are, and this goes with what Councilwoman Birch was saying about our Walk to School Day coming up, is I know village manager and the police department's doing a lot of, or taking a lot of time and effort to reduce the speeding. We passed the ordinance to be able to lower the speed limit, and I keep saying that it's not you as residents, it's the other people who cut through. But sometimes, we just don't even realize that all of a sudden, we're at 35 or 40 miles per hour, so we have to set the example for everybody else, because if you go the speed limit, the people behind you ordinarily can't speed, right? It's just a matter of physics and operation of life. So, just please keep in mind, when you see that 30 or 25, it's different, different than other communities, but you have to lead by example, and everybody else will necessarily follow. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just wanted to mention just a couple of quick things. One of the things that Councilwoman Birch had mentioned, I would just want to reiterate how critically we depend on our volunteer members of our community, want to put out their, you know, their effort, their, their experience to work for the village on these boards. I would highly encourage you to look at the openings that are there, talk to your friends about it, and please do apply. I also wanted to thank you all for coming out to the meeting tonight and making your voice heard. Thank you very much. And the last thing I wanted to mention was that this weekend, October 6, it's the National Solar Open House. So, I'm hosting one at my house from 9:00 to noon. If you're ever just curious about getting a residential solar system going, what it looks like. their, you know, their effort, their experience to work for the village on these boards. I would highly encourage you to look at the openings that are there, talk to your friends about it, and please do apply. I also wanted to thank you all for coming out to the meeting tonight and making your voice heard. Thank you very much. And the last thing I wanted to mention was that this weekend, October 6, it's the National Solar Open House. So I'm hosting one at my house from 9:00 to noon. If you're ever just curious about getting a residential solar system going, what it looks like, you know, want to ask questions about it, it's a good opportunity to do so. So if you look, Google for the National Solar Tour, you'll be able to see where all the locations are, and it includes, you know, my house on there. So thank you all for coming out tonight. Really appreciate it. With that, we will call the meeting to a close. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Vice Mayor. You run a good, quick meeting.